Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Portage Lakes Joint Educational School Board Meeting for the month of September. Mr. Fauzer is not here with us this evening, so I'll be acting on his behalf and running the meeting this evening. So, Mr. Wright, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Dodson?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mr. Jivaden?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. McGraw?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
And Mr. Fauzer is absent.
If you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, there's no visitor comments, and do we have to approve the agenda? How does you have to approve the agenda? We have a need for an amendment to the agenda for this evening from what we had put out earlier due to the last second ad. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Mr. Wright, would you call the roll?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any visitor comments this evening, though? We'll kind of move on from there. Treasurer's report and recommendations. Mr. Wright?
Thank you. Item number one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 18th, 2022, as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? And Mr. Jivaden?
Thank you. Mr. Wright? Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number two is a recommendation to approve the financial reports, check register, bank reconciliation, and comparative financial report for the month of August 2022 as presented, subject to audit.
So moved.
Thank you. I think we had a, over here, then a second, Mr. Hofer?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Wright?
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yep.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number three is a recommendation to approve the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2023 as presented. Legal level of control shall be fund level.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dodson.
Second?
Thank you. Mr. Cohen? Mr. Wright?
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jivaden?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving right into the superintendent's report and recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clark? Good evening, everyone. It's good to see so many students here. We didn't, we don't have that many students of the month, but hopefully someday they all will be. I want to keep it short and stick to the students of the month, and Mrs. Salye's going to have a presentation directly after, talking about some of our positive-based intervention systems at the school. So, August, we had a little bit, a few more days in August this school year, so we went ahead and had an August student of the month, and shockingly, put it out, you know, at the beginning of September, and immediately, on my Google form, were 22 responses from teachers, which I just was shocked, because, you know, last year there was maybe seven or eight, and, you know, went to the next meeting, and they're continuing to roll in, and so that's, that's a testament to the types of kids that, that we have. If I say your name, I'll just go ahead and stand up front and say a little something about you, and we'll let you sit down. Aiden Martinez. Aiden is in our law program. He is a senior from Coventry. Aiden is a full-day student at PLCC in the Law and Criminal Justice Program and the Early College High School Program. Aiden earned an A average in both programs as a junior, and no doubt, he will obtain those grades again this year, due to the effort and hard work he puts in every day. Aiden is always willing to help his fellow classmates and his instructor. He is a very positive person and always has a smile on his face, which is contagious. Aiden maintains his grades while working a job several days a week after school and on the weekends. Aiden is active in his church and has his own cooking show on YouTube. It is a pleasure to nominate Aiden Martinez, and that is from Mr. Britt, your instructor. Aiden, on his questionnaire, when asked what he liked to do outside of school, he likes to make his YouTube videos, doing random activities. He enjoys working at Dunking Donuts and watching the new season of Big Brother. If he could be an animal for a day, what would it be and why? If I could be an animal for a day, I would be a blue whale, because I would always be able to swim wherever I wanted to and not be worried about too many predators, because I would be massive. Congratulations, Aiden. And we'll see, is Allen Lee here tonight? Did Allen make it? Allen's, Allen, she is in our fire program. She's a junior from Green. She has great participation in lab and prepares herself to be successful every day. Allen brings an energy to the class and leads by example, and that is from her instructor, Mr. Tug. So, Allen, we don't, we won't hear Allen's. About Andrew Zingeri. I think I saw Andrew. All right. Andrew is in our Irma program. He's a junior from Springfield. Andrew is very attentive in class. He asks questions and is eager to participate. He is the first to raise his hand always. He's very kind to those around him, and he tries hard every day. He comes prepared, on time, each day, and that's from his instructor, Mrs. Russell. Congratulations there. And last, but not least, Benjamin Walker. Benjamin is in our job training program. He's a senior from Manchester. Benjamin arrives every day wearing a smile and his uniform. He participates in all aspects of lab, and he does it with a positive attitude. He works very, very hard and is a wonderful member of the job training program, and that is from Mrs. Weigand. When Ben was asked on his questionnaire, "In your free time, what do you like to do?" "I like to watch The Three Stooges, listen to music, and singing along," and we all know as a staff, well into music and into race cars as well. "If you were stuck on a desert island, who would you want to be stuck with and why? If I could be stuck on an island, I would be sure to be stuck with one of my friends, and we would play in a two-man band. I would play bass and vocals, and my friend would play drums." Might as well live it up if you're there, right, Ben? Congratulations, Ben. And at this time, any of you students that were here for Students of the Month, you may be dismissed if you'd like, but if you'd like to spend this nice evening listening to the rest of the board meeting, you can do that as well.
Good. How you been?
Thanks, guys. It's nice having you.
Fire on spring. Support thirteen.
I can't believe they didn't stay for this far.
So, I have the privilege of just talking about some tools that we are either using in a different way this year or using, or that we haven't used in the past, to improve specifically communication with our families, the connection that we have to our students, and the positive experiences that we are nurturing here. So, you actually have the slideshow in front of you, but I also have it projected just for our audience. So, we decided to use Remind for more than just reminders, which I think is, you know, as a parent, we're all kind of accustomed to getting those reminders, those homework things, you know, notices and things like that, but we really wanted to also use it to highlight the really amazing things that are going on in our programs, because we don't always know what's happening. And I can tell you, as an administrator now in all of the Remind classes, I'm seeing things that I had no idea were happening, and more importantly, so are the parents. So, what we did was we created these signs that were posted on orientation night, so that parents coming in could immediately sign up while we had a captive audience, so that they're in the classes, they're getting the notices, and then what we've done is we've asked our, our lab teachers specifically to post at least once a week, and we've encouraged them to post pictures, and sometimes they're even posting videos, which is very, very cool. So, the purpose, of course, is to keep parents informed, because as we all know, teenagers don't always come home and tell their parents about what's going on in their day, and also to increase, you know, opportunities for the community outreach. Krista Haworth, our marketing coordinator, she's in all of the classes as well, so now she sees all the cool things that are going on in the classes, and she can promote them to our community. So, another tool that we decided to use this year to connect, to form a stronger connection with our students are surveys. For all of our incoming junior students, we gave surveys the first week or two of class that were focusing on social and emotional factors, so that we could get to know them and their needs. And we had them base all of their answers on their homeschool experiences, with the intention of giving the survey again at the end of their senior year, based on their PLCC experiences, and see if we have helped them navigate some of those challenges that they may have, may have. I'm going to share some of the feedback that we got, and you'll, you'll notice that there are open-ended questions, which Ms. Redmond and I just love to take a deep dive on, because they were candid. The students were really honest about the challenges that, you know, that they faced in their lives. And you, you'll notice, as I share some of the feedback that we got, we, why we kept it not anonymous, okay? We want to know who needs our help and who needs our support, so I'll, I'll move on. So, I just want to highlight that, you know, this was not an opportunity for kids to trash their homeschools. That was not the purpose, and they didn't. They truly didn't. They, it really was just a safe space for them to tell us about their experiences, so that we can try to give them a positive experience as well. So, the first one that I'm going to share, "Do you have a friend from school who you can count on to help you no matter what?" We would like to think that all of our students do have a friend that they can count on no matter what, but 25 of our juniors said that they don't. I want to know who those 25 are. So, that was, that was truly the purpose of this survey. The next one was, you know, "Do you have a family member outside of school that you can count on?" Again, we'd like to think that they all do, but 14 of our juniors don't. I want to know who those juniors are. I'm just going to kind of purse through here a little bit. Another interesting bit of feedback that we got, we asked the students, you know, "Would you be interested in mental health counseling?" We, we partner with Red Oak to provide counseling for students here while they're in the building during the school day. Fifty-five students, juniors, 55 juniors, were willing to say, "Yes, I would like counseling." I found that surprising and encouraging even, that they would be willing to talk to somebody to work through their challenges. I'm going to skip ahead to some of the open-ended questions. So, I'm not going to read all of these, of course, but just to sort of give you an idea, if, you know, if you do find yourself taking that deep dive, all of the questions were formatted so that, you know, a one would be like a bad. It'd be the worst answer that we would want, right? And a five would be good. So, if you think about the bell curve, of course, we're going to have lots in the threes, right? So, we're really paying attention to those, those opposite ends. Really encouraging was the highest rated question asked was regarding their safety. Our students clearly feel safe, at school and at home. Kind of flip through these. Some of the open-ended questions, we asked students, "Right now, what makes you the happiest? What is the hardest for you? And what kind of support do you need?" And there were, there were a lot of common threads. So, in "What makes you the happiest?", of course, there was friends, sports. PLCC was, you know, on their top list, because they were excited to be coming here. The hardest things were some of the same things that also make them happy. Friends can be hard. Relationships can be hard. Knowing what's going on in their future, while exciting, it's also hard, right? And then, "What can we do to support you?" You know, surprisingly, they, they asked for emotional support. "Support me emotionally. Recognize when I'm overwhelmed. Support me in those situations." I, I was delighted to see how candid that the students were, knowing that it was not We also asked parents to complete a survey, similar vein in that it was, you know, regarding social, emotional support for their students. Full disclosure, we did not have a good collection, okay, of parents. Of the student surveys, I think we had 255 responses, so it was fantastic. Parent surveys, 20 to 30, so take it all with a grain of salt. But, you know, it, it was refreshing to me to see that they do feel like they can have conversations with their kids. A lot of it was some of the things that we would expect to see, like, "Yes, my kid is getting too much screen time." Yeah. Some of it was not surprising at all, so. The last tool that I'm going to highlight is our new Positive Behavior Reward Token Economy. We've had a PBIS system in place for years and years and years, and there've been many iterations along the way. This one is the most exciting to me, because it's high-tech, which I think gets the kids involved and maybe even a little excited, and so the whole purpose of the program is to acknowledge students and staff for doing what's right. So, we completely reworked the program. All of your schools have some positive behavior program as well, and we knew that we wanted to simplify it last year, so we polled our students, and we gave them lots of different options. "What are the things, what are the behaviors, what are the traits that you think are the most important to be successful as an adult?" These are the things that they told us. "You've got to work hard. You've got to be kind, and you've got to be responsible." And I couldn't agree more. So, we were really proud of them for, for coming up with that. So, through the system, students earn points, or their teachers acknowledge them for doing something positive, and what's really cool is the teachers also can earn points for engaging with the system, so it's like the positivity doesn't end. We encourage friendly competition for our students, so they're all split into houses. House of Spartans has been very strong this year so far, and it is an average, so our Spartans are really showing up with their positive behaviors. So, every, you know, every other week or so, I, I will send something in the Student Services Google Classroom to, you know, sort of nudge them along and encourage the positive behaviors. Through the system, students can cash in for all kinds of different prizes, and our job-training students help us with that. We also have some friendly competition for our staff. We've got them split into teams to try to encourage them to continue to engage in the program and to reward students. Part of that is positive recognition from one staff member to another staff member, sort of like a Facebook wall, where people can just go out and give shout-outs and, and just sort of spread some positivity about each other and, and let everybody else in the building know the cool things that are happening, and, you know, how much they appreciate when Greg saves me when I have to be out with a kid, or, you know, there, there's just things that people wouldn't even know. So, you know, it's just, again, just supporting that, or just keeping the positivity flowing. Teachers have apps, and they have desktop access, also really cool. Students have an app that they can access at any time, from home, from school, and then, parents have an app. So, parents can go in, parents can see how is their student behaving, what are the things that their teachers are acknowledging them for, and so on. So, if you can't tell, I really love positive behavior and, and encouraging it, and, you know, I, I truly believe that what we do with this keeps students out of my office for the other stuff. And, one last thing I wanted to highlight, this week, we tapped 35 seniors for National Technical Honor Society, and we'll have an induction ceremony pretty soon. That's it for me. Thank you, Aiden.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, please do.
Is it possible to, like, get these, I think it wouldn't be good if the names attached at all, but by school?
Sure.
Because some of these questions are like, one of the worst ones is, I mean, the lowest score is, "How often are people disrespectful to others at your own school?"
Yes.
And I'm wondering, like, is it different between schools or most of students saying...
I didn't take that deep dive, because again, I was not in it to draw comparisons, but I certainly could.
I understand you're not...
I certainly could, if you would like to see your data.
I would, I'd be interested to see it, like, at least...
Sure.
From Coventry.
Sure.
It might be contentious to see them side by side, like, what was the score for that one?
I do think that you, that, and I'd be happy to do that, but I do think that what you would see is common threads. You know, we know that teenagers feel that they need, I mean, I hear that all the time in my office. "Oh, but they're not being respectful to me," whether it's a student or whether it's, you know, a staff member. There's, there's always this perception, you know, that whatever the, whatever's happening to them is a sign of disrespect, so I suspect it would be similar amongst all of them, but I'd be happy to do that.
And then the one that also, and the parents' one, the one about the, I'm not, maybe they didn't understand, like, what the staff's average, you know, what the numbers were, but the one about, "How likely is it that someone from your child's school will bully her online?"
Yes. That didn't surprise me at all, actually.
Really?
A lot of the issues that we deal with behaviorally come from social media or text messaging or things like that, yeah.
Well, I'm not surprised that that's common, but I'm surprised that it was like, the score was so terrible.
Yeah. Yeah, and all of the questions were worded, they weren't worded like, "Bad, good." They were, it was, that one would have been like, "Not likely at all, very likely," so it definitely would have been clearer than, yeah.
Yeah, that's not good.
It's not. Any other questions?
Well, that's the comment. I heard you were handing out balloons to, to students, so...
What, was I handing out?
You were handing out balloons?
I was handing out balloons, yep, for National Technical Honor Society.
Yes, you were.
Yes. It was pretty cool. We try to make a big deal and make it fun for the kids, and I like the balloons, because as the seniors are walking out with them, the juniors say, "What's that all about? Why, why are they walking out with a balloon?" And then maybe that plants the seed, "Okay, I need to, you know, do these things in order to be there next year."
Great to take the time. Good idea.
Does that, does that ceremony happen during school, or does it happen outside?
Nope, it's outside of school. I can share that information with you. Let it plan as well. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Lisa?
I'll be very quick, as I always hope to be. I'll just give you a quick recap of our numbers first. As of August 24th, we had 161 adult education students. As of today, we have 149. Why is that encouraging to me? So, for about, I don't know, the last six or seven months, I have insisted on recruit, 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 like a little robot, and now I insist on retain, retain, retain. So, in looking at previous year's data, oftentimes, in those first four weeks, we lose up to 20% of our adult ed enrollment. Right now, we're only at nine, and that is very encouraging. Oftentimes, if we can get our adults adjusted to the back-in-school schedule, if we can make those connections and those relationships within that first month, we've got them hooked, and we can get them through to completion, and that's really what we're after right now. So, I'll put my recruitment hat back on a little bit later, but right now, we are really, truly focusing solely on retention. On a different note, our COE accrediters left the building today, and I, I want to be professional, but the happy dance I am doing in my head is enormous. I want to thank Mr. Hofer and Ms. McGraw for coming to our aid on Monday night. We were at the Twisted Olive to welcome our guests, so I appreciate your time and your support. That was truly a wonderful thing that you did for us. It was difficult, and it was tedious, but it is over, and it is over for the next six years. So, in the meantime, I will answer some of their questions and get those results back to them. I'm waiting for their official report, but Kim and I met with them this morning, and everything they brought up are fairly easy fixes. In fact, a couple of them, we just, yeah. Again, we try to be as professional as possible, so we're both very relieved. I, I will say that they told us that they rarely give commendations, and I want to share with you that we received three, and so I just want you to know who those three people, programs, staff are, because each one of these groups needed to hear that. First and foremost is my phlebotomy teacher. They remove all of the teachers from the labs and ask for honest feedback from our students. Our adult students are essentially customers, so if you were to go into any store and you removed all the staff and said, "Hey, how do you like these people?" Sometimes it's not going to be good. Our feedback was tremendous. We were so tickled. Obviously, we're not here to be liked by the students, but, boy, it sure helps. So, when they talked about our phlebotomy instructor, Pauline, who is here tonight, who will happily take any of your veins as a volunteer for her students, if you'd like, there's pizza, so you don't faint, but they said that Pauline was very eager to help, help them with confidence. I mean, we're talking about people isolating a vein and drawing blood from strangers, so the first couple of times that you do that, it is not comfortable, and it's an awkward thing to do. So, they raved about her, which was great. The second one that I absolutely loved was our maintenance staff. I don't think you can truly appreciate a maintenance staff until you're here in the summer. These people hustle, and one of the things that they were super thrilled with, first of all, is the innovative system that Terry Rick and his team have devised in our new nail tech salon to drain the smell, to pull the smell from the air. I don't know if you've ever been in a salon, but some of those chemicals that they use to make us look pretty are awful, and they stink, and so they clutter up the building. In fact, in our school counselor's office, that's generally where it gravitated to, and there is a marked improvement this year, so, because of those fans. So, they took quite a bit of pictures of that, and, and they're going to take that back to their own schools and, and try to do the same thing. They also commented on how clean and well-kept the building was, and that there was carpet throughout. We had a, someone from, who had a history in K-12, and she said, "There's carpet in your lunchroom?" And we said, "Yes, there is, and it's clean." So, shout-out to the maintenance staff. They are fantastic. And then the last one was to the Student Services staff in Adult Ed, and they really needed to hear it. It has been a long summer. It's been a tough summer. That recruiting season is difficult. Chasing people around to get things filled out and turned in is a lot. So, Aida Daniels-Lidkey and Kim Robinson also received a commendation for how seamlessly and flawlessly that admissions process was, and of course, that is part of recruitment, and knowing those two the way they do, that is also a piece of our retention. They trust those two, and they know that they can go to them for help, so we are thrilled with that. Again, I should receive the official report within 30 days. I will absolutely share the specific wording for the commendation with you, so Kim can kick it out to you on one of those Fridays, because we were tickled to hear it. Once I get that official report, I have 30 days to respond to it. Given what they told us this morning, it should be very difficult to do that, and then I'm hoping in the new year, I can tell you that we are, again, fully re-accredited for another six years. So, it's a weight off our shoulders. Thank you for all of your support. Thank you for your continued support with Adult Ed, and that's all for me.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, we'll dive into my part of the agenda. Item 6.2 is the new addition to the Agenda Resignation and Settlement Agreement. I'm recommending that the Board approve the resignation of Sherri Kanek, teacher.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Rick.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.3, resignations. We have three. One of them, John Kreidler, I want to mention, had to resign because we are appointing him as our Director of Building and Grounds to transition with Terry Rick before he retires. The other two went on to private industries, so I'm recommending that the Board approve the resignations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jividen. And we have, like, replacements for that?
They're coming up, right?
Oh, okay. Sorry, got to help myself.
Coming on down the line.
Mr. Rick?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 6.4, administrative contract that I mentioned above, John Kreidler being our incoming Director of Building and Grounds. I'm recommending that the Board approve his employment. He has been here for a long time, and there was no one that I mentioned that John was going to replace Terry that wasn't excited about that. Terry's going to be tough to replace, and John's going to do a great job, so we're looking forward to that.
Do I have a motion? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Jividen.
Second.
And thank you, Mary Lou.
Mr. Rick?
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.5, employment. Adult ed, we have a part-time clinical instructor that we are hiring, a male, and we haven't had a male on that staff for a while, so that's exciting to throw him into the mix. We have two custodians to replace the outgoing, Richard Orr, and for only the second time in history, we have a female custodian, Virginia Scott, we're excited about. They are both in the afternoon and evening shift, and it's interesting to watch Virginia as she's vacuuming or doing things and greeting the adult ed students as they come in. She's doing a great job. And then, because of the administrative assistant opening in our Student Services section, we are on the verge of interviewing next week. That's been a tough one to fill. We brought in Cheryl Lutton to come in to train once we've hired someone new. She did the position formally, and she's agreed, reluctantly agreed, to come in a few days to help train the person. So, I'm recommending that the Board approve the employment contracts listed.
Do I have a motion? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Any other additional questions or comments?
How hard was it to find the custodians? Because they're, I mean, I guess I should ask for your secrets, because the airplane...
I wish I knew.
Were they any, like, part-time before with us, or are they...
No, unfortunately. That's what I like, is to pull from our sub piece, but we didn't have any subs at the time.
Yeah.
So, what was pleasantly surprising is that we had enough applicants that actually showed up for the interview and were interviewed. So, we believe we picked two very good ones, yes. So, it was luck and timing, I think.
Yeah.
Plus, we're a great place to work.
Of course.
Mr. Rick?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 6.6, supplemental contract for Amber Berry to be our CPR coordinator. This is part of our collective bargaining agreement with PLE. I'm recommending that the Board approve the supplemental contract.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McGraw.
Mr. Rick?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
My last item on the agenda is two substitutes for custodian maintenance. Charlie is also our receptionist in the evening, but he agrees to come in once in a while if we need someone on a Friday when he's not also working in the evenings. And then, a new substitute is also on the agenda, so I'm recommending that the Board approve these employees as substitute custodians.
Do I have a motion? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And thank you, Mr. Jividen.
Mr. Rick?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, you want to give us the update, how Lorraine County was so kind to appeal the pipeline decision?
I did not see that news.
Well, maybe I'll give some new business.
Okay. I have not seen that news.
We were told, we were told by our treasurer that Lorraine County, they had the pipeline settlement that was within minutes of set-up payout. Right, minutes, but I guess one of the, one of the county auditor, county auditors that were involved decided that they were going to appeal it. There was this one out of, I don't know, about...
Thirteen.
Out of thirteen. And, so now, instead of having that payout, I believe it's going to be, it should be tied up for three to four more years, I think, is what the estimate is, and apparently, Nexus is going to go back and appeal, appeal it all the way from the beginning, so, yeah. So close.
They were concerned that there might have been one holdout, but I thought that was taken care of.
We were, we were hoping, but we got news late that that was going to happen. Maybe it wasn't official, maybe they will come to their senses. I don't think so. So, other than that, I don't believe there's any other new business to discuss. So, we will move into board member informal. Mr. Jividen will start this side, and we'll just group down and see who wants to talk this time, since we always start on the left side.
I'll keep it very short. Welcome back, everybody. Welcome back to school. It's nice to be back into the rhythm of things. Falls are a little complicated for some of us. I'll take it, you know, it's nice to be busy again.
All right, I guess I would congratulate you, Mrs. Trippney, on your wonderful news.
I want to be on camera doing that.
I'm sure it's a, it's a big effort and very nerve-wracking, so, congrats.
I enjoyed the evening, meeting some of the staff that work here, and I was at the table with two ladies that run the cosmetology and nail esthetician. Lovely, lovely ladies. And I'm taking my mom to get her hair cut, and we're going to do some nails and some pedis, and we're ready. So, it's pretty great. And there was a former student there that was just absolutely lovely, and I'm going to take my son to her place, her new employment, so, and it's awesome. I love the, I love the program and the fact that it's available to us. And, oh, maybe I'll look at my blood drawn while I'm here. I'm good with that, I got a vein, it's kind of ready, so, good job, thank you so much.
Yeah, and I'll just follow up a little bit. Yeah, it's just, these meetings are so much, they're so positive. And, like, you know, when you said the comments about the carpet, I have to say, too, seriously, like, I'm like amazed, the carpet is just clean every time I'm in here. It's crazy. So, yeah, it's just like, in the custo, I mean, you're like, you know, I do want to know the secret. I'm a custodian, that's amazing that, like, the day we accept the resignation, then they're already filled. It's awesome.
With two subs?
Yes, I know, like, what the hell, something's going on here. So, no, it's just nice that everything is just consistently...
Yeah, we're lucky that way, yes.
So, it's awesome.
Thanks.
It's just good to know that somebody wants to work, because it seems like a lot of places they don't.
Yeah.
But, congratulations to the Students of the Month, and retaining the students is a big job, I'm sure. And I don't want to give blood, I gave blood Monday, so I'm done with them. They're after me all the time, so, that's all.
Mr. Hofer?
I also want to put in my kudos to the thing at Twisted Olive. One of the representatives really spoke my language when they said, and this is odd, she said, "I would prefer students chase after a technical degree and then go to a four-year college." I'm like, "That's what I like." It was very warming, it was very reassuring that I think some people in college and people in our environment, tech ed, are seeing that, that go out and get that skill, and then you have it. Thank you, Mrs. Saylor, for the balloon thing. I saw that on a Facebook post from one of my board members, and I thought that was awesome. Last Friday evening, there was a class reunion of Green High School, class of 82, and I happened to sit next to a gentleman that was one of the first people that started in this school in his joint vocational career, Die Fossible. Then I also stumbled across a very interesting photograph in an 81 yearbook. So, this is some human interest here, so, it was Mr. Campbell, actually.
Oh, boy.
And in the yearbook, it was Voices of Democracy, so I can see why you've gotten involved in politics, so, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but it was a little different looking back then, but as goes, we all change, but it was just kind of really human interest, and I had a really good time watching all the graduates.
You could have sent that to me.
You don't need to see that. Done, thank you.
Wow. I can't top that, just congrats on a very successful start to the year, and keep it up. You got to give me that picture.
Oh, goodness.
One of your book.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone, for the comments. You know, one thing I think I'd like to really commend the staff on is the communication, not only the ways that you're finding different ways to do it, when the parents are here to kind of make sure that we get them to sign up and that kind of stuff, but actually going and making it a point to communicate with the students at different times of the year as well. I think a lot of times, perhaps students feel that their voice is maybe at a different volume and, you know, a different level than others, and maybe they're not heard quite